All this meeting to order. This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting, February 3rd, 2021. First item on the agenda is public comment. We have more than fifty people at this meeting. So, as is our custom, when we have a large group, speakers will be limited to three minutes for items not on our agenda this evening. And I recognize Mark Mishrisky, and I apologize if I've murdered your name, as our first speaker.
Thank you. I'm just going to get right to it because of the time limit. Thank you for letting me speak. I come to you all as the Bolton Track and Field Coach, a thirteen-year high school teacher in Bolton, and a proud parent of a Bolton Bulldog. Last year, when the NIASC Accreditation Committee visited Bolton High School, they stated that we must address this issue. The chairman stated that our facilities seem more appropriate for the 1960s than the 21st century, and that our students deserve better. To read from the document, it stated that there is no track and field facility. Bolton athletes are forced to compete away from home and lose the opportunity to compete in front of peers. With the exception of their outdoor athletic facilities, teachers and students have the resources to ensure delivery of the school's curriculum. The capital budget does not reflect the needs of the athletic complex. Resources necessary to support the many athletes engaged in track and field program are problematic. For track members to be practicing in parking lots and running in local roads poses a safety issue. The Athletic Director in school...
We lost them.
Mark, we've lost your sound.
...recommendation was that we must make the athletic facility, the athletic field complex, safe. Secondly, I'd like to stress the fact that this proposal would be a town project with countless benefits to the Bolton community at large. It would provide a place for all residents to access the benefits of health and fitness in a safe, outdoor environment. The facility would serve as a community center for events ranging from concerts to athletics to graduations. It would draw students to our schools. Especially important with talk of regionalizing schools in the state, it is in the best educational and financial interest of the town to ensure enrollment at Bolton High School remains full. The project would attract students from Bolton, Columbia, and Hartford. My understanding is that the Capital Improvement Plan calls for renovations to the BHS soccer fields in the near future. Constructing a track at this time would be the most cost-effective way to complete such a project. Typically, about one-third, one-third, seventy-three in 2019, Bolton High School athletes participate in track and field. If we are committed to what is right and best for our students, this project is a necessity. The project would benefit your town, your schools, and your students. It is a win-win-win. For Bolton to continue to thrive, our schools must thrive, and as the NIASC Committee recommended, this is an important piece. This project is not only what is right and best for Bolton High School, it's what is right and best for your town. After sharing all of this with the Board of Selectmen, my only request at this time is that you would take ten minutes at your earliest convenience to review the written proposal that I have sent to you via email.
Mark, we've lost you again. Thank you, Mark. We lost your final comments. If you'd like to repeat them, I'll allow you an extra few seconds.
Sure. I'm not sure where I left off, but the final comment was that I shared via email with both the First Selectmen and Josh Kelly a link to my proposal that includes many community perspectives. So if any member or all members of the Board of Selectmen would be willing to take a look at it, I'd be very appreciative and I'd be happy to discuss the matter in more detail, but I want to be respectful of your time. So that's all I had prepared to say right now.
Mark, when did you send that email? Because I have not seen it yet.
Yep, I only sent it just before this meeting, so you should have it in the next. I thought you'd have it by now, but if not, just let me know and I'll send it again.
Okay, if I have a chance, I will look.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Hi, my name is Caleb Fox.
Caleb, would you like to, and tell us where you live, please?
I live on eighty-two South Road. My son graduated from the high school last year, and I have a sixteen-year-old, a thirteen-year-old, and a twelve-year-old. And encouraged by Mark's proposals to try to rally the troops and see if we can get a track at the school. My kids have played track and cross-country. I think it'd be a wonderful thing for the community. I've gone to Manchester a few times and used their track, and it's just nice. It gives people extra motivation, I think, to exercise, kind of get the community together, you know, kind of, kind of keep us all, you know, focused together and exercising together. And I think it'll draw a lot of students in. We have a really good track team, the coaches have done an amazing job, and I think this is a great suggestion, and I'm really happy. And that's it.
Thank you, Caleb. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If you are on the call and would put a comment in the chat box, I would appreciate it. Otherwise...
I would like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, who is this, please?
This is Sandra Chita. I live at fifteen Steel's Crossing Road.
Okay, thank you.
And my son graduated from Bolton High School two years ago, and he was on the track team. My daughter is currently a senior, and she participated as well as the manager when my son was on the track team. And I just want to say that I think the getting a track field would be wonderful for the community. It would uplift the athletes to have home-field advantage. More friends and family could attend. I think that's important for the kids as well. They would get more support, and I think it brings the community together. My son was also, played soccer for Bolton High School, and when we had the night games, everybody would just come out to support the athletes, and it was, it was a wonderful thing for the town and the children. So I think it's very important. And Mr. Mishrisky also said something that I agree with about the safety issues. I would see my son and the other athletes running in the streets instead of at the school, and I believe that that is a problem as well. So it'd be great for the children to have a track and field at their high school.
Thank you, Sandra. I don't see any requests in the chat box. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight?
Hi, I would like to speak.
Would you identify yourself, please?
My name's Claire Langton. I just graduated from Bolton High School, and I was on the track team.
Claire, where do you live?
I live in Bolton, eighteen Fiano Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I just graduated, and I actually run track at Eastern Connecticut. I'm a jumper there. And I had a great experience on Bolton Track. I was captain for two years, but I think our team would have greatly benefited from having a track of our own. I think we were at a disadvantage with our competition because almost all of them had tracks of their own that they practiced on every day. Whereas we would practice, our track was our parking lot, and that caused a lot of people, including myself, to get injuries like shin splints from running on the pavement so much and just other injuries like that. And I was a jumper, so we have a jumping pit in the back of the school, but the runway was like pavement, and it was hard to jump on. It would have been a lot easier if it was an actual track. So I think our high school would improve a lot, our high school team would improve a lot from having our own track.
Thank you, Claire. Eddie Steele has requested to speak. Eddie?
Hi, I'm A. Steele. I live at twenty-one Williams Road, and I agree that we really need a track because I'm a junior at the high school currently, and I run track, track and cross-country. And where I live, I see how crazy people drive on the streets, and I also see it every day while I'm at school and while I'm out running. It's crazy how people drive, and it's just not safe in my eyes. And I also do some jumping in as, well, like Claire did. And we do not have the facilities for the pole vaulting that I like to do. And it really restricts us how we can practice in such that when we first started getting some equipment to be able to do pole vaulting, Mr. Mishrisky would take his time and get his time to go to Coventry High to be able to practice, but that was once every few weeks, which really disabled us from being able to really practice and get the best practice that we could, that it was only every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Alyssa McDonald is next. Alyssa, would you identify your, your address, please?
My name's Alyssa McDonald. Oh, we already said that. My address is eighteen Deer Run Road.
Thank you, go ahead.
And I graduated in, I graduated Bolton High School in 2014, and I ran cross-country. And then I still live in Bolton, and I've been working from home here. And so I walk a lot in town, and I still run a lot. And, you know, we have a lot of really busy roads, and we don't really have many sidewalks in town. So I think in addition to the fact that it would really help the track team, which would be great, you know, as a resident of the town, I would use it all the time. I've gone down to Hebron a bunch to use it, and there's always people using it, just to have a nice, safe place to run and stuff.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yep, thank you.
Next is Deb Livingston.
Hi there, Deb Livingston. I live at fifty-nine Mickle Valley Road. I'm, I've been in town now for sixteen years, and I'm an avid runner. Many of you probably see me out on the roads, and I definitely wouldn't stop using the roads, but I do think it's a huge benefit to the community to have a track to work out on. I think a lot about beginner runners or beginner walkers who want a place that's safe, that's lit, that they can see what's going on, and there's a lot of people, and the track is definitely one of those places. I know, well, people say, well, why don't you, why don't you just use the rail trail? Well, some people are afraid to walk on the rail trail because they're walking alone, or they're walking through the woods. So a track would alleviate that issue. It's also a place that other sports teams can work out on, too. It's not just track competitors that need to run for fitness, but it's also the soccer team and the volleyball team and all these other teams. They can use the track for those purposes. It would be definitely a huge community builder. You'll be able to have all sorts of family events there for the community and track events. And it's just, I think about it as more of a health and wellness builder for the community and for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. George Chukolsky?
Hi, I'm a senior at Bolton. I live on Two Boat at Terrace in Columbia, Connecticut. I believe a track would be really beneficial for all the reasons that have already been stated, but another added benefit would be students at Porter really like the thought of going to Bolton but are a little limited in their thinking because of athletics. But building a track, I think we could draw in more students from Columbia and from Porter School, and that would benefit not just the athletics teams, but also just the school community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Megan Pechowicz?
Hi, everyone. My name's Megan Piekowicz. I live at four Talend Road in Bolton.
Go ahead, Megan.
And I am a member of the class of 2019 graduating from Bolton. I was a member of the track team all four years in Bolton, and I was a captain my junior and senior years. And I'd just like to emphasize the points that Claire made about injury from running in the parking lot and on the roads. A majority of my teammates and I got shin splints despite buying really expensive running shoes. We also found a lot of danger in running in the parking lot or on the roads at busy times when people are returning home from work or when students are leaving at dismissal from buses and stuff like that. I think the team provided a lot of camaraderie and a beneficial experience to my high school career that I'll never forget, and I think this would be a great addition to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Paul Smith, are you also Paul T.?
That is me.
All right.
That is me, yep.
Would you like to...
I'm Paul Smith, and I've been a teacher at Bolton High School for twenty-one years. I've been in education for thirty years, and I've been the cross-country coach at Bolton High School since 2002. I'm the assistant track coach. I'm out there running with these kids every day. We run every day from Alexis to Hanover Farms along Brandy. And I have about fifteen kids strung out along Brandy Street. We're going single file, we're wearing vests, we're trying to be as careful as possible, but it's pretty scary out there sometimes. I've been running the roads of Bolton for twenty-one years now, and as you've heard, you know, there's not a lot of good roads to run on in Bolton. That's why we run on Alexis and Hanover. We do our workouts there. Those are essentially our track right now, and it's not very safe at all. You know, you've heard about, you know, the shin splint issues and just the danger of running on the roads as compared to a track, the safety issues with the cars, but I just want to bring in something else. You know, Mark mentioned how we had, you know, roughly seventy kids participating in the track program. You know, in COVID, distance learning, kids looking at screens, there's nothing more important than what Mark and I do for these kids, physical health and their mental health. And, and I think having a track would allow us to even attract more children, and we would physically and mentally benefit these kids by participating in this wonderful sport and this wonderful program that he and I have been able to create together. So obviously, I'm very biased and pro-track, but, you know, as somebody who's living it every day, running on roads with fifteen kids, it is far from ideal, and it's frankly dangerous at times. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Sean Eaton-Robb? Would you...
Hi there, I'm Sean, please. Sure, I am in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania these days. I was a Bolton track runner from 2012 to 2016. As was previously stated, it felt incredibly dangerous to do our tryouts and all of our workouts on Loomis. Running up that road with all those crazy drivers could be pretty scary, and I'd say that sometimes I felt safer even running here in Philadelphia than I did in Bolton. So track would greatly help.
Thank you, Sean. Cory Peacock, I think I managed to skip over you. Would you state your address, please?
I am Cory Peacock. I live at twenty-three Quarry Road. I am a jobbing thrower for the Bolton Track Team, have been for the past four years and plan to throughout my college career. Currently, I am throwing at about one hundred fifty feet around that, which is just ten feet off of Emerging Elite, which does some people think is the equivalent of Nationals. Um, I could not ask for a better track team. Coaches are amazing, and just the team is amazing. But one thing that has hindered me greatly is our facilities. Um, since we have been told we are not allowed to throw and practice on the main soccer field, we have had to throw off on the little side one, which ninety percent of the time is barely usable because it's flooded out. Um, yeah, my apologies. Um, yeah, I'm proud to have Mr. Smith and Mr. Mishrisky backing me as coaches. Um, obviously, like I said, I hope to continue throwing traps throughout my collegiate career. Um, and like I said, just all these things and more have hindered me greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah Sefton?
I live at seventy-four Country Club Road in Bolton. I ran cross-country and track all four years when I was at Bolton High School. I graduated in 2014. Participating in these sports was the best part of my childhood growing up in Bolton. I think that the opportunity to have a track in Bolton is essential in continuing to build the well-known programs that coaches Smith and Mishrisky have built here in Bolton. The athletes at our school would greatly benefit from having the same or similar facilities to those of our competitors. Getting on a track for the first time to run or compete in field events is putting our athletes at a disadvantage. Knowing accurate distances for pacing and having a safe environment to train in is a core component of learning distances and pacing for track. This would greatly prepare our athletes for collegiate competition and healthier training. The track wouldn't only benefit the high school athletes, but would also benefit other sports, as Deb Livingston mentioned, as well as our elementary athletes, to have them more interested in coming to participate on these teams and moving into high school. It would also support our community. I know my family, as well as even just cousins in Andover that live further from Hebron, they commute to Coventry just to use the track on the weekends and to have a safe place for their family to be walking around. I think that having this in our community will bring our community together. As Coach Smith mentioned, it's, you know, COVID, everyone's trying to get outside, but we also want people to be outside in an environment where they feel safe and able to work out and not be worried about cars honking at us and swerving around us like I experienced while I was in high school.
Thank you, Leah. Chris Duffy, would you give us your address, please?
Thanks. Stonehenge Lane here in Bolton. Kind of looking at this from a little different perspective. I agree with many of the other comments here. Other than some great open spaces we have here in Bolton, the best thing this town has to offer is the schools. But it's not just about math and English, in my opinion. And my son, actually, who's thirteen, is going to be going to high school next year. He's actually on his own, been looking outside of Bolton for opportunities, better opportunities for extracurriculars. And he plays soccer, and he plans to do track in Bolton next year. So I just want to say, support Mark Mishrisky's proposal here and the comments of others that a track would be beneficial.
Thank you, Chris. Sam Neiser?
Hi, my name is Sam Neiser. I'm at Brookfield Road in Bolton, and I am a 2014 alumni of Bolton High School. I ran track and cross-country there, and I was fortunate enough that actually I was able to get a track scholarship in college that helped me pay my tuition. So the program itself has impacted really everything in my life that's happened afterwards. And additionally, I have lived in other towns besides Bolton, and some of my absolute favorite parts of living in those towns was being able to utilize those tracks and have a safe place to run after on the roads. Thanks.
Thank you. Janice Koval?
Yeah, hi. Eleven Green Hills Drive in Bolton. So I just wanted to piggyback on something that Leah had mentioned with the younger kids, the elementary kids coming up. Because when my kids were younger, they both wanted to run, and even in middle school, it was very difficult because I'm not a runner. So there really wasn't anywhere safe to bring them that I could supervise them and they really could run. So it was like, you know, running around the field, which is not very good. The rail trail didn't really work because I didn't want young girls running out, you know, by themselves. It's not safe. So I really think the track would be a great addition to the facilities at this town.
Thank you, Janice. That is the end of those who have requested speaking in the chat box at this, oh, no, Paco. Paco, would you identify yourself, please? First and last name and your town.
Yeah, hi. Paco Ruiz, I am a teacher at Bolton High School.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to support Mark and Paul Smith's request for the track because I've been also the coach of the Girls' Varsity's soccer team for the last twenty-three years, and we run into many problems, too. I remember running in the road, you know, coming back to the high school and having complaints from different people about how unsafe it was for the girls to be running on the roads and so on. After that, we decided to go to the rail trail to practice, you know, to do some fitness and some endurance, too. But that is also real far. Once we use the rail trail, that pretty much kills the day of practice, which just, we would just run. So it would really, really benefit the girl soccer team, the boy soccer team, to have that facility to be able to practice, you know, endurance runs, sprints, and so on. We've also run into some problems with shin splints, like the athletes have been sharing, have been sharing. So, you know, it definitely would help all the other teams, not just the track teams themselves. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is connected via telephone who wishes to speak?
Um, if you can hear me, yes.
Yes, please identify.
My name is Carrie Lyon. I live at thirty-one Luxway. I am a Bolton track parent. I agree with a lot of what parents are bringing up about, you know, with the benefit of the track, and I just wanted to touch on a couple of other points. I think there's going to be concern with people who are against the track about the cost of the track and putting that together. I guess I have some ideas of thinking of, you know, possibly there's something that maybe, you know, it becoming something of a, somewhat a way of generating revenue if we lend it out to some activities. I know that the Manchester track program this summer, they do some things where they, it's a little bit of a fundraiser that they can, they put together in the summertime for, for the kids. That's something that we could do. I envision this track not only just being for, obviously, for the track program, but for me, for the soccer team. We can maybe lease it out during the summertime to different soccer leagues. The only other comment that I want to say is that, I know that maybe this is a long shot of getting this track, but our track program, our coaches are amazing. They put, they put together a program with little to nothing, and they make it work. They kind of MacGyver it, and I, we really have to, you know, commend them for everything that they have done. And so I think that as a community, if we can kind of look into other options, whether it be grants or, you know, benefactors, maybe in-kind donations, like from contractors or dirt graders or electricians, engineers, you know, folks that can help out. I think that, that's the one thing that's so great about this town is we pull together and we figure it out. So I do hope that that happens. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Carrie. Anyone else on the phone who wishes to speak? Hearing none, is there any member of the Board of Selectmen who wishes to speak to this group?
I'd just like to thank them for their input. It's one of the things that, for us, particularly in this time, and we're, we're out there on our, on our own, and it's hard, it's hard to interact with folks. Where in the past, we would meet and discuss these things a lot, a lot earlier. This is input that, to me, I found it interesting. You made some good points, and there are things for us to consider, and we thank you for, for your input and, you know, hope that you continue providing us information. I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah.
One second, Mike. Just for those of you on the phone, that was Bob Mora, Selectmen, speaking. Mike Aramita, Selectmen?
Hi, I can understand your dilemma here because I went, I went to high school at E.O. Smith in stores, and at that time, it did not have a track. It didn't have a football team. It didn't have all those things. And we used to practice at the UConn track, so we would walk over there, and our meets were held there, and there were very few people that came to the meets because it was off-campus. And we did the same thing, running on the roads, and I understand the, the difficulty of running on roads. So I can sympathize a great deal with the fact that there is no track at our high school for the kids to use, and I can understand completely the dangers of running on the road. So I am very sympathetic to this. As a former track kid, I can very much sympathize with your, your request.
Yeah, this is Kim Miller, and I very much look forward to reading the proposal. Not sure if folks know, I've been on and off a lifelong runner, so I get all your points and take them to heart, so. So I look forward to reading the information you pulled together.
Thank you. Bob Di Pietro, did you have something you wanted to share? Bob, you're muted. Bob, you're muted. Can you unmute him, Josh?
Here we go. I was very impressed with the input from all speakers. I agree with Bob Laura that the information that was shared by them was very well presented, organized. And, you know, we find it, we find it very well.
Thank you. And I also want to, this is Sandy Pierog for Selectmen. I also want to thank all of the participation, uh, folks who came tonight and participated. I know that this is not the best um method to uh come to a meeting and get your point across, and I appreciate your patience. I do want to let you know that the Kappa Committee recently approved the capital improvement request for the town of Bolton for the fiscal year uh beginning twenty twenty-two. In that proposal, there is one point four million for um potential bonded money for the um soccer improvements to the high school soccer field. Those funds do not include at this point the um any improvements that would include a track. So you're timely in your request. And I would suggest that you continue to work with the Board of Education. And ask them to have their representatives to the Kappa Committee bring forward a suggestion to the Board of Selectmen. We can reconvene the Kappa Committee at the request of the Board of Education. I will do that. And uh, further discuss what um should or should not be included in a bond package that we anticipating issue, anticipate issuing in either fiscal year twenty-two, which begins in July or fiscal year twenty-three. With that, I thank you all for coming and I'm going to move on on our agenda to approval of the minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-one.
I move to approve. There are some minor issues, edit wise and tabos, but otherwise the essence was correct. So I move to approve them.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sandy.
All right, it's been moved by Bob Di Pietro, seconded by Mike Aramita. Bob Di Pietro, would you like to point out those uh items that you've noticed need correcting?
There's too many. No.
Too many?
Oh, no, not now. There are a lot of tabos.
Okay.
Minor things.
Okay, if you could get those to Josh.
Okay.
Um, I would appreciate it because I would like our minutes to correctly affect, reflect what actually happened. Uh, and I have to admit, I have not had the opportunity to read them um as well as you have.
You know, it took twenty minutes to read it carefully.
Yeah, it was a long meeting.
It was a long meeting, but I, I concur with Bob that I, I, the substance of, of the minutes are correct, are as, as I recall the meeting. So if there's a, some, some technical errors, as in maybe a misspell or, or a grammar error. I think that can be corrected as, as just correcting a Scrivener's error. So with that.
Yep. All right. With, with that in mind, all those in favor of accepting the minutes with future correction of Scrivener's errors, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? I believe that was unanimous, Yvonne. Thank you all. Um, appointments? Josh, do we have any appointments this evening?
Sandy, we are starting to collect a few requests for appointments to the Ad Hoc Diversity Commission. At this point in time, though, the numbers are low enough that they don't meet the minimum threshold. So I figure let's have them all considered at the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Um, if anyone is still on the call and interested in the diversity serving on the Ad Hoc Diversity Committee on the town website. There is a link to the application and also a link to the board's resolution forming the committee. So please take a look at those items. Um, and if you are interested in serving, please get your information into us as soon as possible. Our next meeting is Tuesday, which I believe is March second. Correspondence?
I have no special correspondence to share with the board tonight.
I have two items. I had an email from a resident um asking the board to consider installing a left turn only light um in front at the intersection of Bolton Motors, uh, three J's and the mobile station. I let that individual know that was a state road and gave them the contact information for state DOT. On top of that, that's it. Reports and updates, subcommittee reports. I believe you have in your packet minutes from the Human Resources, Human Resource Subcommittee. The Human Resource Subcommittee is meeting again tomorrow or Thursday? Josh?
It is tomorrow. Sorry, I was unmuting. Tomorrow at two o'clock P M.
Tomorrow at two o'clock. Um, and we will continue discussing um the position of highway foreman, the uh position of treasurer, the personnel policies and other items. So oh, in addition to that, we have received a request from the Supervisors Union to uh negotiate a new three-year contract. So we'll be discussing that tomorrow in executive session as well. Any questions or comments on human resources? Okay, properties and facilities. I'm going to let you do this, Josh.
Overall, there, I had the chance to talk with John Butromovich just a little bit earlier on this question. And then with Gwen Marion, Touchbase and I Touchbase yesterday about open space. So I'll try and um kill two birds with one stone and let you know that there really isn't much to report. At this time with properties and facilities, uh, we continue to work under COVID guidelines from the CDC and from local and state health department. In general, um, we, we have no major projects in the works at this time regarding our facilities with the exception of continued work with the Yukon students, which has begun again in the development of schematics for potential new town hall building. Um, as far as open space management and acquisition goes, um, I have been contacted by the town of Andover. It seems as though there was a little miscommunication about a parcel of land that straddles the Bolton, uh, that straddles Bolton and Andover. And it seems as though um the owner of this parcel is going to donate uh lands to the town of Andover on the Andover side. And while it was thought that at one point that they would be trying to, or the town of Andover was of the understanding that the land would also be donated to the town of Bolton. It turns out that the land trust is actually the um likely recipient of that small parcel on the border of Andover. So Gwen will be able to share more information about that in the future, uh, but nothing else to report on either of those two items.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Any questions on properties and facilities or open space? All right, on to the budget report, Josh.
You've got it. So first up, you'll see this is, we do not yet have a January final tax collection report. I'll zoom out here for whoever's following along on the screen. But in front of you, you will see the December tax report. So you'll note as of this time that the supplemental motor vehicle levy on bills had been sent out and some of those uh funds had started to trickle in at that point in time. But bills did not become due until January. So uh, you will expect to see in, once we have the month of January's numbers in, that number will considerably rise. Overall, we have a ninety-eight point nine six percent collection rate at this point in time. Questions on this before I go to expenses? Sorry, expenses?
No, I just want to comment for anyone who might be still on the call that um our collection rate is outstanding compared to some of our neighboring towns. So Josh?
This year. So, well, over to expenses. You'll see on the screen in front of you that there are, um, there, there is actually, oh, yeah, something going on here. Sorry, everyone. Hold on just one second. There we go. Um, you'll see in front of you that there is only one line that is highlighted in yellow uh this month. And these are current as of January thirty-first. So we are doing a lot better um than we have in past years. As you can see, a lot of our expenses in lines are down over prior years. And a lot of that is due to the way that we're operating under COVID. I do again want to in, ensure and assure the uh Board of Selectmen that we are continuing to pursue all projects uh that have been uh given to us as directives by the board and, and all of the various goals that I have been trying to work towards as well. Nothing is going unnoticed. Um, and, and I hope that you don't think that our lack of expenses in certain lines um reflects any lack of work. Uh, on the contrary, I think that folks in Town Hall are working harder than ever to make sure that um we're, we're countering all of the different hardships uh that face not just us, but the residents um and that we're moving forward with uh an excellent level of efficiency. So the elections line, as you'll see, is the one line that is considered to be in a concern category. Um, and that's largely due to the fact that we had such a strange presidential election and such a strange set of primaries to have to manage, given that there were so many absentee ballots to be issued. Are there any questions on expenditures?
Nope.
Overall, we are forty-five point eight percent expended on the budget.
Um, and as far as elections go, um, I just want to remind the Board of Selectmen that uh we don't know yet what the format will be for this year's um annual town meeting or the budget referendum, um, whether we will be allowed to do that remotely like we did last year. Or whether it will be a no excuse absentee ballot or vote in person event. I had hoped that the governor would give us some additional information. Last week, they did not. So there's hope for, again, for tomorrow, but I'm not terribly hopeful because I think there are some legal issues that some of the towns who have um special elections in April, March and April are dealing with that are going to be um dealt with on the governor's team first, and then he'll be on to budgets. So.
It looks like we, looks like we have enough money should we need to use it.
I would agree, um, except for the fact that we also budgeted for municipal primaries in this year. So it would, if there turns out that there is a municipal primary, it could affect this number.
If we can find two people that want to run for the same office, it would be very nice.
That's a problem I would love to have, Mike.
Yep. It'd be nice if this wasn't enough money for that reason.
Perfect answer, perfect answer. Okay, any other questions for Josh? All right, moving on. Uh, ongoing business, budget transfers or appropriation requests. I don't believe there are any.
Or not.
Very good. Um, and I do not believe we have any other.
No, nor new business looking down.
Great. All right. Onto the first Selectmen's report and COVID nineteen. As of the report that came out at um four o'clock today, we now have two hundred and four cumulative COVID cases. During the month of January, we went from a hundred and eleven to two hundred and one cases, which is an increase of ninety cases in a month. That's not great. Um, and since February first, we have had two thousand one to two thousand six, we've had five cases. So five cases in three days. So our, our local spread is still happening. The governor's office um also is sharing information on how the various towns are doing with vaccinating um their uh residents. According to um the Department of Public Health, they think we have four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four residents, of which to, they say two hundred and eighty-six are over seventy-five. Um, the issue with that is that they're using two hundred, uh, two thousand ten data. Uh, our uh senior social services director thinks we have closer to four hundred plus over seventy-five residents in Bolton. But using the state's numbers, we are fifty-nine point four percent uh of our residents have received their first dose. So it's actually some, I'm guessing somewhat less than that if we really have four hundred.
Sandy, what's our total population now?
According to the State Department of Health, it's four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four.
That seems lower than the last time we had a census.
I believe it is. What the Department of Health tracks is death certificates and birth certificates. So the last census, I believe, had us at very close to five thousand.
I thought it was fifty-one hundred.
Forty-nine hundred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the reason I, I know it was under five hundred is that five thousand is a key breakpoint for certain grants. And we, and certain party rules as well um for the political parties. And we've been below five thousand. And I expect we might stay there, given this information from public health. But uh, according to that, to the Department of Public Health, four hundred and thirty of our residents have received the, for at least the first dose of the vaccine. And right now that, which is just under um ten percent. Eight, it's actually eight point eight percent, Sandy. You said that. So um new numbers come out on Thursday, so um I'll be posting those on social media as soon as I get them. See, what else did I have? Um, the, just to update you in case you didn't um see it from the planning and zoning, the proposal that was in place for one notch road from Landi Construction to relocate their business there has been withdrawn. from land deconstruction to relocate their business there has been withdrawn. Apparently they need some additional time to, um, address some of the concerns of the, uh, local residents. So we're hoping they come back, um, with an approval there. And, uh, Thursday evening is the public hearing on the charter change. Um, so Josh, can you make sure that every member of the Board of Selectmen has that Zoom link, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And, um, I think the Board of Selectmen all received a call from Josh today. He made me speechless. Um, those of you who are listening, Josh has submitted his resignation to take on a fantastic professional opportunity as the town manager of the town of Winchester, Connecticut, which is the, um, home of the city of Winston. So he will be with us for a few more months. Um, hopefully in the next, after tomorrow's, um, Human Resources Subcommittee, we will be, um, on our search for his replacement. I had a wonderful conversation this afternoon with the mayor of Winchester. I told her she was getting somebody super. Uh, we were sorry to lose him and asked her if we could continue to pester him once he was in their employ. And she said, without doubt, we're very happy to have him. So you'll be hearing from us frequently, Mr. Kelly. So.
Josh, one thing, you're going to have to wear a suit and tie for that job.
That I know.
You're going to have to have snowshoes out there.
Yeah.
I, I've had a couple of people already tell me I might need to trade in my Prius, so.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to get.
Oh, my gosh. You need a four-wheel drive.
Yes, you will.
Um, and I know that, I, I know that I have, uh, another couple of months with you all, but I, I really do want to thank you all for, um, receiving this news in the very positive way that you did. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to the next couple of months of putting my nose to the grindstone and making sure, um, that you're all set for the future and that you have somebody great to come in and, and really help steer you forward. Thank you all.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and now on to the administrators' goals, which I didn't realize one was find a new job.
No, no, no. But, uh, I, I am very glad to say, and I know that a couple of you had the opportunity to be on, uh, this call earlier, or, or I should say last month. But in January, we, on January 19th, I believe, we had the opportunity, uh, to have all members of the town's leadership team, along with a couple of Selectmen, um, sit down and participate in a diversity and inclusion training session. Um, and I don't know if either of you want to say a couple of words about it, but I have heard a lot of feedback both from you two and from the town staff that it was informative, that it was engaging, um, that it certainly helped spark some conversation. Um, and I think that everyone's development on the subject, everyone's maybe in a little bit of a different place, but this helps, uh, certainly me get a better sense of what more we can do amongst town staff to, uh, further those conversations and make sure that people feel included, feel empowered to speak up, um, when the need arises. Uh, and, and, um, you know, just continue to develop themselves as individuals and to respect others. So, um, that was a huge success. I really do hope, uh, and, and we'll continue to talk about this as we talk about the budget, uh, that you'll continue to, uh, see fit to fund opportunities like that for yourselves and for the town staff forward. Um, and then I also know that on my, uh, my list of, uh, report, or my report list is to discuss the four-town economic vitality plan. Um, I will tell you that, uh, since we last met, there has been one meeting of that group where Sandy, Patrice and myself have had the opportunity to sit in as the, um, actual voting members, representatives from Bolton, uh, to this four-town group. Uh, we still don't have a name for the group and, uh, progress is slow but steady. I think I would characterize it. And Sandy, please feel free to, to chime in if you have anything else to share. Uh, but we did discuss, um, primarily how we can work to have a more collaboration on our regional events. Uh, and, um, and I think that we have some great ideas. Have to make sure that we're sending our residents to other communities as well as encouraging residents from nearby towns, uh, to check out Bolton as a means of helping to bolster the local economy. That's.
And one of the things that came out of that meeting is, um, Coventry is at the current time spearheading. But they are developing a, uh, four-town event calendar. So that if you want to know what might be happening, um, in Bolton and Coventry to make an afternoon out of it in the area, you can look at this calendar and figure it out.
Absolutely. Um, I, I don't have too much else to report tonight. I think that, um, we have some more subcommittee meetings that need to be held in order to move a number of projects forward, um, before I, I take my leave. Um, and I'm looking forward to having those conversations. Thanks.
Um, and can you make sure, Josh, to forward, um, Mark's email to the rest of the board?
Yes.
In the morning. Um, I did find it, um, it's a lot of pictures and a lot of testimonials from students as well as, um, some talking points that I think we heard from the various, people who gave us testimony tonight. All right.
Sandy, just.
Yes, Mike.
Just speaking to Josh's comment on the diversity training, for those of us that didn't get an opportunity to do it, it was well worth the time. It was relatively painless and almost fun. And, uh, it was worth our time. It really was. I, uh, it was, it was a good presentation and a good workshop. So if the, if you get an opportunity to sit down on it, do it. It was worth the time.
Josh, was it recorded?
Um, I, I did not record it, but they may have recorded it locally.
Okay.
But the contract that we have, we weren't permitted to, uh, that full recording.
Okay, that's why I couldn't find it.
But that being said, yeah, yeah. That being said, I do have all the slides if you're interested in taking a look at that. Um, and I'm sure that, uh, I, I've been in touch with one of the presenters since then. Um, and I'm sure that, uh, we could work out something if there were more individuals who were interested in taking that training.
But Mike is, is correct. Um, I went into it with more than a little trepidation and came out thinking, wow, that was a great use of my time. So.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have anything else they want to discuss before the famous motion?
In that case, I will move to adjourn.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, second, Kim Miller. Um, that was Bob Mora who made the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I see that everyone said aye. Good night, all.
Good night.
We will see some of you tomorrow and some of you Thursday night, I hope, at the charter revision hearing. Take care. Be safe.
Sounds good.
I have a meeting Thursday night, so I'm going to be between.
Bah.
Two, two computers.
Love it.